All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for coming. We're gonna begin tonight with the public hearing, and then we will move on to our regular board meeting, which I invited them all to stick around for. We're recording things on each end this evening. The trustee is already cannot be here. She was snowed in somewhere in the west. Flight was canceled, and she couldn't be here. With that said, so this has been a long process here in the village. A number of you were at our last public hearing several months ago. And the reason we're having another public hearing is because the board went back from that public hearing and changed parts of the law. So every time we do that, we have to have another public hearing. So here we are. I'm gonna read the intent, legislative intent. I hope that everyone has read the law. I'm sure you have, but... "The keeping of hens supports a local sustainable food system by providing affordable nutritious food source for fresh eggs. The keeping of hens also provides free nitrogen-rich fertilizer, chemical-free pest control, animal companionship, and weed control, among other benefits. The purpose of this law is to enable residents to keep a small number of hens for non-commercial use while creating standards that ensure that domesticated hens do not adversely affect the neighborhood surrounding the property where such hens are kept." That is the legislative intent of this legislation. With that said, is there a motion to open the public hearing on Local Law A of 2017?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. We will let everyone have a chance to talk, maybe a couple times, as we usually do. You don't want anyone to leave feeling they haven't heard. And please address your comments to the board. Try to avoid it back and forth. And with that, we'll open it up. If you want to hear what you have to say.
Go ahead, mister.
Yeah, and excuse me. Please state your name and your address for that.
Okay, my name is Virginia Borger. 68 Yoffel in Tibbly. I live here in Tibbly, 58 years. I have chickens, I have ducks, I have bees, I have turkeys, and I have peahens. I don't have six, I have a lot. They are my children. I play with them, okay? I feed them, I take care of them, okay? I just had two that I just had to take to vet. One little group, one of my property, and had worm laid. I took that to vet along with a 45-pound turkey. Okay, I wanted the turkeys. They were not doing good, okay? So I take care of my kids, and I call my kids. They're like, well, they come to me, you know. Maybe I'm unusual, I'm too little, I don't know. But I love them, I love them dearly. And they'll tell me I can only have six chickens, or this, this, or that, that. I don't think it's fair. This is the US as far as I'm concerned, all right? And I don't know, I have five acres of land. I try to keep my place up pretty decent, okay? I take care of them. Now, my coops are pretty close to my house. I do have my property's roof all fenced in, all right? Except the back. They don't go wandering, I mean, before I had a festing, they did go out in the road a little bit or something. But they don't really bother anybody. People come and look at my, they love my kids. I don't sell the eggs. I get duck eggs, I get goose eggs, I get chicken eggs and turkey eggs. I give them away. I don't sell them. I could sell them, but I don't do that. But there's a lot of stuff here that come to my house and inspect my coops, inspect this. I don't believe this is all necessary. I don't know where all this started from. My friend Nancy Clark here, she has two chickens. I helped her. She had a lot of controversy about getting them in the beginning. And now she's got them, and she loves them, holding them for little children too. And you can hear from her as well. Us who do manage chickens and stuff, we try to manage them. Anybody who has them should take care of them, should have a place for them to run, should have a coop for them to go in at night. I make sure. I went to a wake tonight. Before I went to the wake, I made sure everybody was in their coops to put the two little chickens out. And my sister got them to go in. But every night I put them in, I let them out. A lot of times I let them free-range throughout my whole property. They go along, or eat, drink a little water, eat some grass, whatever, eat the bugs, you know. My neighbor goes through, has guinea hens. They're good for the ticks, you know. He has all that property right across the street from me. You know, they come over, they come over my property, it's fine. I have no problem with that, you know. I mean, if they're curbing a lot of stuff, they should curb a lot of people. You've got these doors running all over the place, coming crap on everybody's lawn, okay? There's a lot of other things, I think, that should be addressed. Instead, worry about little chickens. I mean, we have a problem with water, we have a problem with... We have, you know, we have a lot of problems here in the village. We should be spending our time addressing all of that more. Then worry about some chickens. I mean, if somebody's chickens went on somebody else's property and did damage or something, then they should talk to their owner, own the chickens, and they should take care of the problem. Make sure they're fenced in right, make sure... I mean, they'll fly, you can put the wind a little bit, and they won't fly over, okay? Make sure they take care of their chickens. They shouldn't be really bothering the neighbors. Yeah, I agree with that. And the last time I was here, a man was complaining because he worked so many hours in the weekend, he didn't want to hear a rooster crowing or something like that. I'm sorry about that. This is, this is the village. This is a rural little village. You know, this is not like Manhattan or Ever or whatever. This is a nice little village. We'd have a little bit of some of our stuff in the property. The development of, which I, it's terrible that everybody's clustered together and they don't have a little more space, you know. But I think things should be addressed differently. I can't read everything that's on here. I won't read it tonight because I have my glasses with me. But some of the things that I was told about, I really don't agree with. And nobody's gonna tell me I can't... I mean, I have coops right next to, in the back of my house. I gotta move them out of sight so my neighbors can't see them. You know what kind of money that's gonna cost me? I can't do that. We'll go for the weight of that, and then the neighbors won't see them anyhow. When the meat falls to trees, I see a house behind me. When I go up here, there's nothing there. Trees and everything, and, you know. So I'm gonna yell about, I see, oh my God, they just put up some trees so I don't see those houses. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be a nasty neighbor. I never tried to be a nasty neighbor. And, you know, I don't complain a lot. And I'm not gonna complain about. But these little chickens and ducks and geese and turkeys and stuff I have are very, very important to me. Very important to me, I'm telling you that. I'm not being a snitch. They're my children, and I love them to death. And I'm sorry other people had a problem with other people's children and... No, I don't, I don't like chickens, because I'm in downtown, and I saw chickens right across the road over there, in the Bibble, which, that surprised me. Now, they should be cooped up in a pen, you know. If somebody has some property, put a fence around it, keep them in. They should be right across the road to get one over the middle of the road. Well, they shouldn't be there. I agree with that. I agree with that. But I, I don't know. It needs to be addressed differently, I think, a little bit.
Okay, I would like to take, write a few more comments, and then, you know, we may respond to some of what you said. But I'm gonna wait for it, yeah.
Yes. Hi, I'm Nancy Clark. I live at 12 MacFomery Street. And this is my second round with the chickens. Many years ago, when I started out, when we started out with six baby chicks, started raising them, you know, and it... Well, there come the thing, I wasn't allowed to have them. I wasn't zoned for them. So it was a long process. I had to go, come to a meeting, had to pay a hundred dollars, and then come to a meeting here, and it was okay. Then I had chickens. I wouldn't have any roosters. I have an adequate pen. It's eight foot high. It's all wired in, it's netted, except for the squirrels come through now. But they have, my whole property's chain link fence. At that time, I went around to all the neighbors, the board at me, and asked them, "Do you have a problem with me getting chickens?" "No, I don't sell the eggs, I give them away." And they are, they're my pets, they're my girls. I have nine. And I just think some of the things of, you know, cleaning the coop every week, the wintertime you don't clean them. You let it grow, stay in, it keeps them warm, and then, you know. But I clean them when, when they're due, and... And then if I get any new ones, I clip their wings because when they're out, so they don't fly and bother anybody. But I think the amount of chickens, like I said, I have nine. It says here, six. It's hard to get rid of a couple chickens if you had them, raised them and... And Y6.
Let me back up to some of what you asked me a little before my argument, which is like, how did we get to this set of rules? We have a zoning review committee of residents that, you know, the village board sort of gives them a topic, backyard hens, alterations in the historic overlay, lighting. And they start working as a committee to decide on that topic, what should the rules be in our village? And they are residents, they're not the board trustees. And they work on that. And then they will make their recommendations on what should it be about lighting or hens, pass it to us, and we try and take those recommendations, put them into the legislation, and hopefully ultimately into a sensible law for our village. So for the hens, where they got these, that committee looked at many, many, say, 12, 14 other communities across the country. Tibbly is not alone in its desire to enable backyard henkeeping. And so there are lots of models across the country to look at. And so that's where we sort of got these. Most of them are consistently no roosters, not free-range, a limited number, often based on acreage. That's the sort of, you see the same sort of considerations from law to law to law. And the number six comes from, chicks are sold and have ducks. They're sold in six-packs, yes. So that's, so you can't, we couldn't, you don't wanna work with a number less than six. So six is sort of the unit of chickens, is sort of how they saw it. And if we are gonna, you know, we can disagree about how many is appropriate on what size, but the unit of six, that's where it comes from. And so, you know, if we're saying a certain size, six. More than that, 12, because of the, because they're sold in a six-pack.
Do you have a question? You say in the six, right? Under this committee that you guys put together, who was on the committee? Was any of them farmers? Any of them had chickens themselves, you know? It should have been people who have them, who have raised them on the committee, so you get better feedback, okay? If they just low-lam and curly, never had chickens, "Oh, no, you should only have six, you live it." No, that's not right, okay?
Okay. Jog my memory of whose volunteer to serve on that. Dan Dioka, Kathy Revolo, Jackie Goss.
Angela Cole.
Angela Cole.
Okay. One had chickens, but Angela lived next door to me, and she loved mine over there.
Yeah, but I wanna point out, I'm married to Dan Amy Peterson. The recommendations that he made to the committee, none of them made it into the final version of it. So he is the own chicken owner on the committee, and he pointed out a lot of concerns that he had about these provisions, none of which got factored in here. And I also wanna clarify that they're not sold in six-packs. Six is the minimum number of chickens you can buy. You can buy eight chickens, or chicks. It's not that you have to buy them in units of six. So that number of six is arbitrary.
So can you buy two?
You can't, you have to buy at least six. But you can buy seven, you can buy nine.
Okay.
You can't buy any less than six.
Right.
And one of the, when you wanna buy the chickens, right? They sex them a lot of times. And you can buy them, supposed to pay more, well, they're wrong. We've had a lot of sex chickens, and they were roosters. It wasn't supposed to be.
So, and I'll just, to the process, whether you think it was valuable or not, another thing that happened as these were developed was the zoning review committee reached out to the Cornell Cooperative Extension, and we had a chicken expert come and talk to us for an hour with mostly about how do you take care of chickens properly? What sort of materials would you give someone if they came in and said, "I'm gonna get chickens for the first time." You know, there's things to note. So there was an expert consulted.
What was that? Did they talk to you guys, or did they talk to everybody?
It was just from the cooperative extension who came to the first chicken hearing.
I missed the first one, I didn't know about the first one.
So, and also, what's happened here is the zoning review committee once had a chicken forum, which maybe some of you were at. I believe it was on the third floor, you presided. And then as their recommendations came to us and it worked out legislation, then there's a public hearing, which is a legal definition. And that was a couple months ago, and now we're here for a second. And I'll add before, you know, I'm talking too much, and I wanna hear from other people. But I will add that we have on here, animal companionship is one of the reasons we wanna enable backyard henkeeping. So when you say they're your kids, we understand that.
We should probably argue the status now, right? Like as it stands now.
Okay. So here's the hard part, folks, and I'm just gonna be really frank with you as someone who happens to be getting your mayor right now, but identify very much as one of you, but I'm sorry, maybe you don't believe that, but it was true for most of my life, so...
You had chickens when you were there, didn't you?
My parents had chickens.
Yes, you did.
So, for years in the village of Tibbly, there have been chickens at various properties. We all know that. However, the fact is, legally on paper, they are not legal. And although practically speaking, there have been chickens in Tibbly for decades, the law has never matched that reality.
Can I clarify that? They're not illegal on paper either, are they? There's just nothing addressing chickens on the books.
And in the code, it's very, it's very fine, but in the code, if something is not, I'm looking for my notes because I wanted to say this correctly. If something is not expressly permitted, it is considered prohibited.
Isn't that the farm parcel?
The zoning board of appeals has already addressed that, so...
But it hasn't been formally...
Mayor, the zoning board of appeals has already addressed that.
I know this is very difficult, but from where I sit as a legislator, and from where I sit as a mayor who, since the last three years, the chicken thing had to get figured out, because it is very confusing for all of us. So that's what we're trying to do here. Figure it out so it's clear and explicit. Now, I've had, there's a couple things I'm trying to respond to here. The farm parcel, is that what you were suggesting?
Right, just that it is allowed on a farm parcel in the 2A and 3A, because a farm is permitted use in the 2A and 3A.
So, yes. It's permitted on a farm parcel, which can be in a 2A or 3A zoning district. And practically speaking, I sort of, we're trying to clean this up and make it work, okay? There are people who think it's been legal for years, and I'm sorry to tell you that that's not the case. And so we're trying to fix that. This is actually a pro-chicken-keeping proposal to make it very clear. And this issue of is it expressly stated or not expressly stated? What if Tibbly's code has a section that says "hens," and it's clear? Isn't that of value to all of us? That's what we're trying to do. So, that's the status? That's what we're trying to say?
And so that people who wanna have hens can have hens, and people that don't wanna have hens don't have to be impacted by them in a way that, if nothing else, keeps everybody equally upset.
Pete?
I have a question. All this stuff is all kind of, I'm a little extreme over this issue as well. I kind of tend to agree with a lot of what has been said on that. But it seems to me that this is just one of those places where a small number of people who are in opposition have a certain great number of, a great amount of weight over other people in a way that, I think it's a little heavy-handed. And I'm wondering if, while we do have to codify it in the law in some way, would it be possible to look at it more as suggested guidelines than some sort of draconian specific number? Like, you know, if you have six and a half chickens, you get a summons.
Actually, if you have six and a half.
You what? Side of the drive. I mean, I don't know, is that dumb to think of, maybe trying to think about this like that?
I wish we lived in that world, but unfortunately, I think there are too many times when you need a law, a rule, because you do run into the exceptional cases, not most of them, when you have to do some sort of enforcement, address a real problem. And from where we sit, if we don't have that law, we actually, you know, we could say, "Hey, please." And they say, "No," and then it's stuck. And when I say "we," I mean the community. If someone's living in a house, and the neighbor has chickens and is not taking good care of them, or...
Well, that's why you're having them.
You know, it's just as much, while we want to enable there to be henkeeping in the village, we also have an obligation to mitigate the impacts for the adjacent properties who maybe don't want chickens anywhere in the village.
What if the adjacent properties all say, "Hey, no problem, that's cool."
What if those people live deep?
Well, that's true. Then it becomes a different, it becomes a different...
And if the dark place, there's a chicken in that door.
And also, what if those people are not taking care of those chickens? Obviously, they'll die off, they won't have chickens.
Well, that's why you have the laws, the recourse for going in and doing something about it.
That's true.
I mean, for the majority of the people who are opposed, I should say, most of you take care, great care of your chickens. And we want you to continue to take great care of your chickens. And these are guidelines for the future, so that way you're very clear on how to take care of your chickens. And also, anybody else who wants to come along and get chickens can take good care of their chickens as well.
Mr. Clark? I'm Nancy Clark's husband. The zoning board of appeals has already addressed this and said that, and I believe it was R3?
R15.
R15, whatever it is, wherever it is. That's already been passed. And then the minutes of that meeting were somehow discarded.
Well, my next comment in response to that was, I have no record of that.
I know.
I can't find it.
I know, but couldn't even...
So, once again, as a chicken owner, you are unprotected in a sense.
The zoning board of appeals people, Pete's wife, I believe...
Was she involved?
Aaron Cleveland. Yeah, Aaron Cleveland. They have a recollection of it.
Again, we're trying to get something that's gonna all fine easily.
The village to keep the records. It is not up to us to keep your records. All right, that's one. Second thing that I wanted to mention is, is my wife Nancy wrote a letter to all of you, and I would like that right into the minutes.
Absolutely. Did we include that already? I think that may have been included already. We'll check, and if it wasn't, we definitely read it at a workshop and talked about it at night, and I would make sure that it's in the notes.
And the third thing that I wanted to mention is, we've mentioned dogs, but nobody mentioned cats that defecate and smell up or spray all over the place and keep people up because they are loud. The ZEO, C, whatever, is in charge of enforcement with one meeting. The animal control officer, they have an animal control officer for dogs. No, we have a ZEO for hens. Where does that come about? Everybody knows a dog, and everybody knows how, what dogs entail. And yet we have a special operator for a dog, but not for a chicken. This Joe Schmo, who is elected or appointed, I'm sorry, our ZEO, all of a sudden now becomes an authority on chickens. That makes little or no sense when the state determined, and virtually all states, because we've lived in numerous, say the same thing. Those are dog law enforcement officers, special person.
Does any, any community have a chicken law enforcer?
I can't answer that, I doubt not.
I've never heard of it. So someone will have to do it if we, you know, decide that we're gonna have some rules about, you know, people not taking care of their chickens.
If they had training, that would be nice.
Well, then if our guidelines are all clear on how chickens are to be kept, and it's in the code, then the code enforcement officer would be that person, right?
I don't think we really need it.
No. I'm going to kind of dispute that point because the reason that this came about is because of some disparity in opinions about how it should be handled.
Where was that, where did that all happen? It didn't happen on Nancy's place? Didn't happen at my place? Now, I mean, I know my neighbor, two houses down from me. I mean, she's not a bad person. She's just, her place is terrible.
It has happened elsewhere in the village. Now, not everyone is a good chicken.
Yeah, I guess my question is, does it matter where it originated? I mean, what we're seeing now is a result of the fact that we have people who have different opinions about how it should be handled. I was going to address your comment before about issuing some guidelines. And my point, I guess, is that we can issue guidelines, but if there's no requirement to follow those guidelines in the form of a law here, how do we, we're still gonna be where we are right now? Which is, I don't agree with that. I'm not going to adhere to those guidelines because my opinion is different.
I guess what I meant was, not to suggest guidelines rather than law, but to have the law and use the law as a guideline rather than something where you actively have the chicken patrol going out and staking out people's houses and tracking their feed sales and, you know. It's, I don't know, it's just, it seems to me that it doesn't have to be as raw as it is. But if we have the law on the books, that's good for times when there's extreme neglect or the neighbors are unhappy. Then we have, of course, legally to go and say, "Well, actually, this is the law." But otherwise, are you actually gonna have people going around checking this stuff?
Right. Chicken car, probably not.
Probably not. And that was my point. Those people who are responsible owners of hens and have been for decades or years will still continue to take care of their chickens.
At the whim of the zoning enforcement officer. It's a little more than a whim.
It's more than a whim.
Really, not much. You have to clean, one chicken you have to clean and cook once a week. Six chickens, you have to clean the pen once a week.
And Courtney, if you don't do it for two weeks and get it on the third week, and it's not waiving a smell to your neighbors, they're not complaining about it? Do you think the zoning officer's gonna knock on your door to check off your monthly cleaning?
I could.
Probably not.
Well, I don't know. Zoning officers at times are...
Piggy. That's easy word to put it.
Peter Walsh, 18 Green Tree Road. I don't know if anybody in here has ever traveled through the development. You're talking six chickens per coop, per person. So I have the potential of having 30 chickens in my backyard. That's unacceptable. I had chickens when I was a kid, but I have five acres.
So, also, the change in this draft from the previous draft is that we have rewritten it so that existing chickens in the development, which is the R15 outside of the historic overlay, when they live out their long, healthy lives, cannot be replaced. And when the existing chickens are gone, there will no longer be chickens permitted in that, in the development.
It's an interesting thing that, as Chris said, what if the people next door moved? Well, when they built the, put lighting in the baseball court, the people that moved into the development, many complained. Well, I'm sorry. And that was in response to the village. You know, the lights didn't come down, there's no fine. You know, you chose to live there. Well, if you choose to move in next to somebody that has a chicken, you chose to move in there.
But if, but if you live there next to a person with a chicken, and you can smell them, and there's vermin coming to attack them, and it's...
Nobody disagrees.
You know, that is the issue that we're trying to prevent. Not only for you, but for the people down North Grove.
Right.
You know, and I mean, and that's the point of this, that we're putting guidelines to make sure it's sanitary, make sure it's safe.
With the option of a fee.
With the option of a fee. There's a fee.
The idea was...
Yeah, it's to register chickens, right?
Right. So that you have to come and get guidelines. Because, yes, you guys have had chickens forever. You know how to raise them, you know what to do, right? But if somebody gets chickens, like, hey, what a great idea this would be to have chickens and get eggs, and, you know...
But if somebody gets chickens, like, hey, what a great idea this would be to have chickens and get eggs. And, you know, we wanna support that, but also, we wanna ensure that, like, people know how to do it, right? Because you go into Eggway and the chicks are so cute. It's like, alright, give me some of those, right? So, the thing is, come to the village, oh, for what, five dollars? Get a permit, get a packet of information that we've gotten from the city on how to, you know, care for your feed and, you know.
That's what they're done with my chickens too.
So, you know, it's five bucks, you get the information, right? Like, we want to help.
Sorry, chicken costs, so just, yeah, you'll get it for your first time.
This isn't like, you know, chicken or fashions.
Not everybody, not everybody who comes in the village, knew the village was gonna want to raise chickens. But if they move into somebody, now, I mean, Andrew lived next door at least ten years. And she used to like coming over. Used to clean the yard. Andy's dog used to run to my yard, my whole field. He died. I never yelled, complain. I loved her, loved Murphy, you know?
Not everybody has the same position.
Right, I I understand that, you know? And, yeah, I mean, I do have land around me, which I like. I couldn't, I could not see myself living in a development like that because I want to live that close to somebody that close. But a lot of people have choices that they have to do. And, yeah, but if they, if people have chickens there and somebody selling their house next door, you know, if they don't wanna see chickens, they shouldn't buy a place. Find another place to live, you know, whatever.
Do you have a hand up for the back there?
Uh, yes, John Collins, um, son of lots of land in the development. Appreciate your change in it in the development because it is a proximity issue. After the last hearing and with the detour in in place there for, I had a lot more time to look at parts of the village that I don't see on a regular basis. I can tell you that if I had moved into somewhere, I mean, places in the village, particularly down there on Montgomery Street, twenty-five years ago instead of the development. I would still be here with the same concerns about proximity to other houses and other people owning chickens. A lot has been said tonight about, you know, this, it's a village. You know, villages are not farms. Chickens are not domesticated animals. I appreciate that people appreciate their animals. My wife used to feed the birds on a regular basis out our back deck till that rat showed up. Which I attribute to potentially having chickens in my backyard and having seen broken eggs. It it's, again, I definitely appreciate it not being in the development. It is close. Um, we live, we chose there because we had children and it was a good place to raise children. But, again, if I had moved in on Montgomery Street or in any place in that center of the village there, the houses aren't any further apart than they are where I live. And I would have the same exact concerns. Um, and yes, there are people who take care of chickens. My neighbor takes care of his chickens by all accounts. He takes very good care of his chickens. But, and it was made, the comment was made earlier by the the first speaker here, you know, at five o'clock on sunny July morning. On a Saturday morning, you're trying to go to have sleeping for the weekend, they make enough noise. And we live in a very, very quiet quaint village. I mean, it doesn't take a lot of noise in the village here at five o'clock in the morning to be potentially a bother. But, again, it is a village and it is, to me, it's all about proximity, whether it's the development or whether it's in the the center part of town, it's about proximity. I I also think if you're gonna have screening, screening just from the front yard just doesn't cut it because, again, what about screening from the side yard? And you talk about people moving in where the chickens are there. Well, what happens if you move in and somebody else moves in after you've been there and they wanna bring chickens in? It's, yes, not everybody agrees that the chickens belong in a congested uh, environment like this, right? They, you know, so.
I I think what we took away from the the other chicken forums was that, you know, the main concern was, you know, chickens outside the historic overlay were more of an issue because, you know, in the development, backyards can be front yards and a lot of different sightlines. And there seemed to be a lot less uh, concern about chickens in the historical overlay, which is how we, we're gonna be on this one.
And many of the places on Montgomery Street have a lot of land.
Very good.
You're not like tremendous.
Okay, there are some people raising their hands, so I wanna sort of keep the structure, if I may. Yes, Amy?
Um, I I just wanna speak to this idea of screening the chicken coops. I I brought this up last time. I think it's totally ridiculous. It's it's about aesthetics. It has nothing to do with the welfare of the chickens. It has nothing to do with maintaining a clean space, a healthy space for the hens. It has nothing to do with anyone's safety. It's just about people's idea of what is attractive and what is not attractive. We don't legislate aesthetics in any other way. People can put a garden on wherever they want to. So I don't understand why we're saying that the coops have to be placed in a certain place, why they have to be not visible from the street. It's not, it doesn't seem fair to me to to determine for everyone what is attractive on their own land. And many people are gonna have to do something to hide their coops now. And, you know, it's it's things like that in this law that are gonna make it a lot more difficult to to have chickens. You know, when you start imposing these regulations about where the coop has to be, about how it has to be covered, about um, having to register. And and that that five dollar fee isn't listed here. How do we know that that that's what it's gonna cost to go register your chickens? I mean, there are just all these loopholes here that are making it a lot more complicated than it needs to be. And these things have nothing to do with the ideas that you're putting forth about why this is being inactive.
Did you talk about screening the coops? I just had a note here that parking regulations incorporated aesthetics as well. So it's certainly not the only, and the carrot, but there you go, it's certainly not the only legislation that takes aesthetics into consideration. And while the goal here isn't to necessarily limit you, it is to give consideration to the fact that people do have different aesthetics. So, your point is, why would I not wanna look at my chickens or why would somebody not wanna look at my chickens? And somebody else's viewpoint, Amy, might be, why do I wanna look at your chickens?
Well, okay, why do I wanna look at anyone, a flag that someone is waving? I mean, this is a very slippery slippery slope when you start saying that maybe someone doesn't wanna look at my chickens. What else don't they wanna look at that you're gonna weave into some kind of new law? I mean, I'm sorry, that's just not.
Yeah, but we're talking, you're not talking about decoration in front of your house. You're talking about um, antihusbandry.
Antihusbandry structure.
Uh, Pete, we'll come back to some of that. Pete?
Yeah, these chicken coops are there, obviously, there's setback regulate, you know, setbacks and stuff that's gonna fall under a normal secondary structure type of.
So we took the recommendation of the zoning review committee that said, well, let's follow the setbacks that are in place for any other structure in your backyard like a shed. So the ones for coop placement are the same as for, say, a shed.
I must, must consider you on a shed.
Was it fifteen feet off a sidewalk?
Fifteen off a sidewalk.
Off the, yeah, well, maybe.
We we didn't think you should have a shed or a chicken coop one foot from the property line. Pete, you got something?
Just approach it.
On the screening thing, Amy, I think the 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 motivation was that we are looking at a community that's very divided on this question. And how do we let some people have hens even though some people don't want hens? And so I think the motivation was, it's out of sight, it's out of mind, but, you know, that's that's where that came from, or whatever that's worth.
Well, in my mind, it feels like someone in the development who doesn't want hens in their yard, in their backyard, is now saying that someone in a totally different part of Tivoli is is dictating the rules for the hens in other places in Tivoli.
That's not, that's not true at all. I mean, I don't want thirty chickens in my backyard.
Well, you know, another thing, we we have been working on this, I mean, we as a community, we as the Z R C, the zoning board, I mean, the the board of trustees. For almost two years and we have spoken to a lot of people. So our sample of opinion is very large, it's bigger than those of you who took the time to come here tonight and say, thank you, man, for. But um, given that sample set that we have heard from, this is what we came up with as most fair or least unfair. Uh, Mr. Collins?
Uh, again, because it came up again, and the main reason I came this time is because of the comment made last week about the development versus the rest of the the village. And I just don't see it as a development versus the village. I see it as a proximity issue, um, pure and simple. And, yes, we had the proximity issue for sure in a development, but I think, again, there may not be other people out there that that agree with me, but there are plenty of other lots in this village that that proximity becomes an issue.
Yes.
Yes, on Montgomery Street, some of those lots have a lot more land than we have, but there those lots are also structured much more differently. They seem to be very narrow going to the background. So you might have a lot more land, but you don't necessarily have a great, greater amount of distance between your neighbors there either, so.
You raised one of the other challenges that Tivoli had that maybe some other communities have not had, which is, while we're all talking about all those lots over there are small. There are much smaller lots on certain parts of the historic overlay, R fifteen, say, Washburn Avenue, some places on Farrow Avenue. So it was almost impossible for us to write something based on acreage. And and as Deputy Mayor said, you know, what we believe was enough of a distinction between the R fifteen historic overlay, not a historic overlay, was sightlines and the way the the parcels are laid out. So, while the parcels on Washburn Farrow are very close, very, a lot of proximity, as you say. Uh, sightlines are a little different. Front yards, backyards are a bit more established. Uh, so that was what we had to work with better.
Mm hmm. Um, I wanna disagree with the concept that it's an adversarial reading of the development versus the rest of the town. Because honestly, with the development, the way it's laid out, in between houses, you guys have probably more space than than we do, certainly. And I think it's, I think it is partly about an aesthetic issue. It's like some people choose, make an aesthetic choice to live in certain neighborhoods. And other people make aesthetic choices to live in different neighborhoods. And they obviously, even though our size requirements and our closeness is the same, there are parts of the village that are not into the chickens. And there are other parts of the village that don't seem to care. And it does seem to fall in that division, if you will. Between the subdivision and the.
Roughly, but we have certainly heard from exceptions from both.
Of course, there's always exceptions, but I think as a as a general rule, the 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 source of frustration with the chickens tends to be from from that neighborhood, I think, right? I mean, I could be wrong about that, but.
I don't know where the source is for shape that started all this. I I know what I've experienced. I know what, because of the way that the lots are are um, situated. That, as the gentleman behind me said, if all my neighbors decide tomorrow they're planning on having chickens, I'd be surrounded by thirty, forty chickens between the five or six lots.
But I think most likely, your neighbors are probably more or less like you and they probably are not going to go out and get.
My my neighbors in the back has chickens.
We we do wanna direct our comments to the board.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. It's okay. Sorry, apologies.
It's it's an augmented structure, but as it's.
There are, as you know, and the board knows, there are chickens in the development right now. Um, it's it's more than just one uh, lot, it's larger than that. I I just want, I really felt at the last meeting that it was categorized as a city folk versus country folk type of thing. And from my perspective, it has nothing to do with that except for proximity. And had twenty-five years ago, my budget been able to allow us to buy a different house in a different part of the village, I would still be here with the same exact concerns as the house that they bought in in the development, which was, you know, the one we could afford at that point in time as a growing family, so.
Well, you know, I think that we hear a lot of that comment, you know, why would you buy a house? I've heard it a couple times tonight, that that same opinion sort of repeated. Um, if you don't wanna be near chickens, don't buy that property. But I think that we need to, again, put ourselves in the position of a neighbor. And, you know, I suppose the the response could be, if you wanted to keep hens, why didn't you move to a farm? So, this forum, this public meeting, the work that's been done already, really is an effort to take those two far opposing extreme opinions and marry them in a fashion that makes it obviously not ideal for either side. This is called compromise. This is the set of rules, guidelines that we have been able to craft that at least takes a stab at making sessions on either side to allow the keeping of hens in a manner that doesn't create quality of life issues for those folks who are not of the chicken admiring club.
Pete?
Yeah, I wanna address the aesthetics thing. Is that kind of, just some stuff going on about that? Or is there any kind of, you know, some people that are gonna bring chickens on their property might just throw up a couple pieces of plywood and some tar paper and that's it. And and I think, you know, obviously, nobody wants to see that. But if, is there anything that addresses, you know, what the size should be? And what, you know, is is uh.
Yeah, I don't think we talked about.
You know, no one wants to see tar paper hanging over some plywood, but, you know, if your chicken coop's a cute little chicken coop, you know, does it have to be screened with trees and bushes and?
I mean, I think partly that's where a packet of guidelines to help chicken owners would be, you know, what is the best, you know, coop design? There's some pretty interesting and cool coop designs out there that people have come up with, you know? I would say, in general, a lot of chicken coops are ramshackle, sort of like what you described, and that's another reason to hide them from the public way. In the backyard or screen that.
But if we can, if if there's something to alleviate, you know, that that there's some kind of design that exposed, you know, this way, like this lady, they'll have to put trees and bushes around a chicken coop.
It's hard.
To answer that, there's, or an answer, is there is no uh, rule for um, how a dog uh, box is uh, designed? The material made, uh, for that matter, the size of the dog box as listed in your proposal. Um, the square foot per chicken, it, that's not micromanagement?
Those are recommendations from the Cornell Cooperative Extension. That's where we got it from. We're not looking to micromanage anyone in this village. Believe me, we couldn't if we wanted to.
I'm sorry, we never talk about chickens again.
It's an interesting thing. When I, when I brought up the zoning board of appeals, you have no record of that. We have no idea that, in fact, Cornell says so.
So, I didn't, with the Cornell Cooperative Extension, it gets these recommendations?
I don't know.
You're you're calling that into question?
No, I'm, you called, you, I have no record of that. I don't know that.
Fair enough. You have to take my word for it. And my point is, even if I take your word for the fact that the Z B A once gave you permission. None of us, you nor me, can prove that to anyone else. And there are situations where you have to be able to prove it. So I'm trying, we're trying, to put something on the books that this village can stand behind and say, what's going on with chickens? We'll turn to the hen section of the code. It's all there.
Right, so it's not a variance, it's not, you know, something sort of transitory granted in on an individual basis, right? Like, we wanna make this for everybody, so it's super clear in perpetuity.
I definitely understand that. Uh, the mayor told me that there's no, I, when I mentioned there's no record of it. Um, uh, that we were passed, there's no record of it. Um, why is there no record of it? The village is in charge of keeping those records.
Do they get rid of them after a certain amount of time?
I'm pleased to say that was before I was even a trustee. I can't speak to my predecessors. I cannot. And ideally, we would have every record that ever came through, but it's not an ideal world or village. It is now.
I think it's not ideal.
He said that. Did we write that down, boy? It's just anecdotal, maybe. So, literally, the first day of my first, you know, I got the key to the office from Brian. I sat down at the big desk. And the first person through that door, it was about chickens. And I think we should all have a talk about that. But this person had had chickens for some time in the historical overlay of the R fifteen down that way. The neighbors objected. And at the time, they went to our previous code enforcement officer to get a decision. And they could not come up with a decision because it was too murky. And so I put this chicken thing on the to-do list for the village because that's not fair. It's not fair to either party, the people who wanted to keep the hens and had to give them away while the kids are crying, or the people that didn't want the hens walking across their yard when they live at the neighbor's house. So, you know, you can't get perfect, but we can get better than we've got. And that's the goal here. Amy?
Let me tell you about chickens. You know, it's a rare, chickens unique nest market to me. They own the nest nesting boxes, they lay their eggs. They sleep on a ranch or or a place. They don't sleep in the nesting boxes. And what they do, they get up and they all gather together. So I have a woodchuck and a, like a nice little sandwich. That's how they sleep. So how can you say, I mean, you're able to say. So how can you say, I mean, you're always saying so many little readers for this and so many readers for that. They go in the next den boxes and then ask, make the eggs, okay? And then we go to my, and then, with ivory very blind, you know, my plopper's.
Without any property.
Okay, and I do have another back area where the turkey's coming out and we put a zip code through the turkey house. Okay, big nice little coop for the turkeys themselves. And then we put some of the ducks in there with them, but they roost. When they sleep, they roost. Because they're birds, they roost on trees, on branches. They don't sleep in the box, they don't sleep on, on the ground. Ducks sleep on the ground. Turkey sometimes sleeps on the ground, you know? You know, I think that's the difference in a lot of it. And people know, you know, and I know Cornell should know theirself, but I keep that thinking, that's all we, speak to me, I don't understand.
Well, it actually lays it out here that it's four square foot per hen, and that's a floor space.
You want four square foot? It's pretty big, four square foot.
Right. So do you think that twenty-four square foot would be adequate for six hens?
For four square foot, we have to be busy from the end of year for one chicken, that's the difference. They don't do that. They don't, they huddle. Come to my house. Come and I put my chickens away.
Okay.
You know, you can see how they all, they all put on top of their, you know, they're on top of it. I, I built, my first one I built is a little house I built. And they both on top of the roof of that, they like to sleep high. They don't sleep, they don't.
Okay, but when they're doing other activities, I mean, should put this out there. Right, they're all over the place. So is it not fair to say that they could huddle in four square feet if they so chose, even if the entire structure was twenty-four square feet?
Sure it could.
Okay, so you're not prohibiting that huddling that you're talking about, but if they were not to set out these parameters that were the ones that were suggested by Cornell Cooperative Extension, might somebody make an enclosure that might be too small?
Yeah, you said just one chicken in four square feet, isn't that?
Right, well.
I mean, that's like chickens.
She's just saying like, like four by six, would we have six chickens?
Yeah.
That's all. Four by six.
Okay, so that's what it is. And then a run, a fenced run shall have a minimum of eight square feet per hen. Okay, so those, I mean, I, I'm not trying to muddy the waters here. Let's be very clear about the parameters that were recommended by Cornell Cooperative Extension. There's no guesswork, I mean, he was very clear and precise as to what those are going to be for. So it's not down to millimeters, it's square feet.
A lot of people, I mean, by fence, all they can think of, I mean, what's with them? They're like a real fence, they're like four feet out, like ten feet or something like that.
Four by six.
You know, whatever, you know, it's, it's pretty big, you know?
Yeah.
More room you run, you know, more grass, you know?
Absolutely, yeah. Well, that's the intention, is to clarify that, so it is adequate.
Okay. The way you said it.
I'm sorry, yeah, I know, twenty-four, I'm sorry to delay you with how to.
One chicken when you walk back, I mean, if you're running around, let's do not, you know, because they need to run.
The last one, the, the run, the recommendations for run is.
Yeah, and it could exercise, you know?
May I, may I point out something? All these, I mean, the recommendations for good health of the chickens.
Yeah.
These probably will not be looked at if you're taking well, good care of your chickens and your neighbors aren't complaining about it over and over and over. I don't think the CEO's gonna be here, chicken coop with his tape measure. I think if there's issues, then we have recourse to come after.
I understand that.
You know, and I mean, you know.
I mean, somebody coming on the property every three weeks.
Nobody has to have that.
It has a right to, if you're a taken man, he will.
Or other, other comments on this legislation? Yes, Susan.
Susan Heiser. The Tivoli Gardens is the olive area, right? And the kind of center left, that's Tivoli Gardens, right?
This here that you're talking about?
No, 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 Tivoli Gardens.
It's north of the, north of the pink.
It's olive rather than, you know, the darker olive color.
It's to the left side.
Yeah, right there. So the kitty corner from that is another olive section.
Is that also R fifteen?
Okay, so all of the sections that are this color, this olive color, are R fifteen. So even this parcel over here, this here, and all of this.
And so no one could move in there and have chickens at this point.
They can in the historic district, can you maybe walk around with that? Or do you want?
Yeah, sorry, I mean.
Yeah, if you find out, it's very, very, very small, y'all look at that.
But so our, we are R fifteen, and Amy's R fifteen. So if we had chickens and they died, we could replace them.
No, no, you're in the historic.
Because you're also in the historic district. This is a new one.
So the historic district has these little hash marks, right? That's historic district. R fifteen, but you're in the historic district, that's the friendly chicken zone, right? Friendly hen zone, excuse me.
Friendly hen zone.
Right, but this, this is not, because it's R fifteen, but it's not historic.
And Ginny is north of the pink area. Yeah, so, I mean, is that better? It's, it's not as punitive for Ginny, right?
So it's the same, chickens, hens would be permitted.
Hens are permitted.
But because they have more room.
There's only one place where we are proposing to not permit hens when the current hens perish, and that is the R fifteen, which is not in the historic overlay, which is a legal way of saying essentially what we all call the development.
Okay. So it's really, everyone else gets just the best deal they can from this. I mean, they couldn't like petition for a different zoning and maybe have a better.
Well, we're probably not gonna change any, we're not gonna change the zoning map?
Yeah, right.
It's possible to tinker with laws, you know?
Yeah, because you weren't really thinking about chickens and space between houses when you made the zoning map, so, right? I mean, that wasn't a consideration when you made the zoning map, was, the space between the houses. I mean, because it would have been a different zoning map.
Chickens, they're chicken map.
Anyway, I mean. Thank you, thanks for.
Thank you, House of. And anyone can find the zoning map on the website, go to Local Law, and then follow through and it comes to law.
We're up on Mulro, right, one of your up here, right?
Could there not be different rules for different phases?
There cannot.
There cannot, there cannot be that, considered to bother.
It's called spot zoning. So when we write laws, we have to work with the existing zoning map. And so we have to have creative ways of saying the development, for example. But you can't say, you know, this property on Montgomery Street has this much acreage and this one's got that much, so they can have different rules. We're not able to do that. Yes, Jenny?
I remember a lot from you tonight. I, I agree, if, if somebody's not taking care of their animals, they can do stuff like that, and really bothering the neighbors. Yeah, the neighbors should complain, you know, complain to the person. They don't make it better than something else to be done. I agree with that one hundred percent, okay?
Because today, we don't have that ability.
Huh?
Today, we don't have that ability, Jenny, to go after someone who's really not taking care of those hens, who's really bothering the neighborhood.
Well, there is the thing for not taking care of your animals, there's animal, um, I get so much humane stuff for cats, pigs, everything.
That's part of why we're doing this, trying to do this.
I bet you, I, and I'm not lying, I swear, my mom fast read. I get seven to eight letters of donations from every organization under the sun. You, I mean, you know, not just the police, humane society, about the dogs, about the cats, about the pigs, about, you know, I mean, like, where do they get, you know, I mean, let's think of moneybags or something, for donations, for, but there are organizations out there for, you know, that, you know, somebody can't get old, I don't know how. I mean, I may have them a little bit, and I probably could. Um, but I do believe, I mean, I, if my animals, my, my children bothering somebody else, I would, I mean, you know, you pull it, it's a lot, you know?
Not everyone has those sort of neighborly skills that you have, Jenny.
But they should be, especially when you live near.
Okay, try governing the village of Tivoli.
You know, I mean, I, I'm going to tell them all, I know what's going on there. I look for the chickens, I haven't seen any chickens. If somebody's not taking care of them, and if you've got six chickens in a little box like this, that's, that's amazing.
Here's the thing about it, Jenny, the complaints don't just stem or start from abuse of animals like chickens. You have neighbors, you have residents here in the village that, you know, they have issues with odor, with, you know, they're talking about vermin attraction. So it's not even necessarily has to get to the level of abuse before somebody might have a problem.
No, if you take the name of the, of the hen.
Well, you know, I think that that's a reasonable statement. And so if you take a look at the specific guidelines that are laid out here, read over them specifically, tell me which one you think is unreasonable? Because all of these are geared toward the keeping of, okay? But they're all geared toward the proper care and health and well-being of the animal with consideration to the impact of keeping those hens that that might have on the neighbors.
Okay, you say RTFT bringing somebody else in on this to, they have to come and check your property, check this, make square footage, and, I mean, that's like, we have other things I don't want to even go towards instead of paying them salary for something else. That's why it says the neighbor should be neighborly, and if something's wrong, report it, and then you can do something about it.
But if we don't have a, a law or a code, we have no recourse when somebody, when it escalates and somebody's filing that complaint. So I hear you, but short of putting legislation in place, there's no course of action, there's no opportunity, if you can't come to a neighborly agreement.
Right, when you have that tool, God forbid you have to use it, you need that.
Yeah, you got it.
Might actually take issue with that, the humane society has an enforcement branch that will cover.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so there is recourse.
Well, but that doesn't take into account noise or odor or, like we can't. Not everybody's gonna be neighborly, right? And it would be great if living in this small village, everybody could be sitting with one another and have conversations and work it out and do the best thing, but that doesn't always happen, right? There's not always that kind of consideration.
If, in fact, if they are not raised properly, the humane society has an enforcement branch that will come on to your property and seize your chicken.
Well, that's very good to know.
Absolutely. But if a neighbor has a complaint, right, has a difference of opinion in regard to, hey, you know what, the smell from your chicken coop is bothering me.
Then call the humane society.
Okay.
You shouldn't have that much of a smell, fill up a few chickens and, you know, clean it. I mean, really, you know?
As a hand in the back, Pete, please. Yeah, I'm gonna respond to that comment. In the summer, the odor that comes from the chicken coop that I'm adjacent to, I can't sit on my deck, not every day, but certain times when the wind's kinda drifting my way on the deck, you can smell it. And this gentleman that spoke, he lives in the neighborhood too, I'm sure he can smell it too.
Other comments on Local Law, A of two thousand seventeen? Yes, sir?
Harcin Hahlian, thirteen Lizzalain. I thought I would just speak for the sake of being on record. We live in the development for the last three years, and one of the main reasons we moved in is because from our plot, we can hear this wonderful birds that live on North Road. And we thought that if, if it's a place that's friendly to chickens, it should be a place friendly to people, to kids, to foreigners. And so for us, it was, it is a welcoming sound and something we really cherish and value. So I'm, I'm absolutely pro some kind of legislation, because it would probably help chicken owner, to owners to fight aggressive attacks that they may sometimes experience. But, yeah, I'm also somewhat concerned that it may be a little bit too prohibitive and smaller birds, as I've mentioned, that may, may be actually raised in a smaller development. I, I don't remember the name of those, but they're quite granifol, I think they're called.
Granifol.
Yeah, and also, it's kind of a shame, it would be really a shame to see chickens disappear from the development, from those plots that are facing the woods and where they seem to be quite comfortable and not, not, not too oppressive to chicken haters. I suppose you do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. You know, I, I have to tell you, I think that's cute, you know? A community that likes chickens is gonna be nice to people, that's really nice, I like that. And, you know, again, our purpose, our goal is to enable the keeping of backyard hens, but we do have to do it in a way that it doesn't adversely affect other property owners. That's the challenge. And it is a sloppy message challenge, I won't kid you on that. But this is the result of a lot of effort and our best effort.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Do you need compost, right? Doesn't compost smell when it's rotten?
Well, um, let's see. The, the way that it's spelled out in the recommendations here is that hen raised must be disposed of in a safe and sanitary manner with a minimum frequency of once per week or may be composted on site with sufficient green vegetation and soil so as to prevent odors from leaving the property. So again, not trying to create that gray area, put in place some common sense parameters to keep it. The complaint there, or the potential complaint, is paint the smell from your chickens, the odor is disturbing me.
Because I, I take care of a place down, and like I said, we're in the middle of a dingo here, and in the back, they throw everything, you know, circle, okay? Eggs, and this, and that, and they're terrible, it smells terrible, okay? And they don't compost, they just keep throwing stuff. You get bananas, and you get great, you get everything, eggs, you know, everything is just thrown in a pile. And, you know, you're going back to normal, you know? But it's bad enough in the woods, they have a bit, but all the neighbors are going, they like to do. But we have, do one of these. You know, yeah, you compost, because I compost mine, I compost it up, and then it makes up soil. And then you store it, yeah?
Any more comments for this public hearing on this legislation? Trustee, is there anything else you want to say? Is Susan true?
I'm, yeah, I'm gonna miss the, seeing the chickens running around. That's all. We walked up by Ginny's and the people with guinea hens, and they weren't in the road or anything, they were behind the fence. And the guinea hens don't cross the road because Timbal said there's nothing to eat on the road. So they stay in their yard, anyway. We'll just miss that a lot.
I'm seeing, hey, these chickens that Bob and Raina's rooting around over there, because there's plenty of stuff to root around there.
It can be quaint and charming, but I have to tell you, I feel that many, many, many serious complaints from the times in various parts of the village when chickens are in traffic and people are scared of driving, it's out there and.
They can't speed then, you know?
If it's really, really quick, Jenny, because we have a whole other hour and a half after this hearing.
Before we finish, there can be up a wire, we finished, I have five, five turkeys, six turkeys. And they just go up to the front, and then they walk out in the middle a bit. Well, guy was going out on the roadside, stopped because they're so cute. They're circling right around you. He said, so cute, they did, like the Indians, all the Indians around the guy, you know? Cute, but right up. You know, cute, they wasn't, you know? They didn't hurt them, they're just, you know, want to see what it was. And he, he stopped and pet them, you know? But then they just want to realize, and that's why, if you're in the fence, you gotta find it. On the fence, why? Something untouchable.
So I, I won't speak for the other board members, but I do feel this is a pro-chicken law. This is about enshrining the ability to keep hens in Tivoli, which currently is not enshrined on paper, where we can all look at it and find it right away. And that's something that we feel is worth doing, and that's why we're putting this forward, so. I hope that, I know everyone's not getting what they want here, but we rarely do. And we're working on a lot of other stuff besides chickens, Jenny, so we should stick around. We're doing water, LED stream lights, new truck, potholes, all kinds of stuff. And it's amazing, we're also doing something.
I think question about the poles too.
Yep, we'll stick around for the board meeting. All right, last call for comments. Is there a motion to close this public hearing? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye? All right, we're gonna take like three minute break, and we'll be in sort of a meeting. Thank you all very much for coming and for your comments. Okay. My chicken's name was Bingo.
Huh?
My chicken's name was Bingo.
Really?
All right, we got, we got work to do, so. Good evening all, it is eight twenty-four PM. And I hereby call to order the February two thousand eighteen. two thousand eighteen meeting of the village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thanks to those of you who stuck around for the rest of what we do here on the village board, apart from our public hearing on chickens. We would like to begin with the village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
Okay, uh, in the past month, there were two payrolls that were processed. I attended one planning board meeting, the deputy clerk attended one ZBA meeting, four hundred and sixty-six trash tags were sold.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Tommy Senior's not here, I was gonna make sure he talked about the, there's a pancake breakfast coming up, I'll get the announcement before we're done here. Wanted to be sure to talk about that. Okay, trustees, we are gonna approve some minutes from our previous meetings. We have January seventeenth regular meeting minutes and the January seventeenth public hearing minutes, that was the public hearing on the solid waste, the garbage cans. You've had a chance to review these, thank you Clerk Bruno for your excellent work on the minutes, as always. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
That was Major followed by Schneider, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. The minutes are approved. Moving on to treasurer's report. This month, out of the A Fund, we spent forty-eight thousand fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents, out of the F Fund, seven thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and seventy cents, and out of the G Fund sewer, two thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents, for a grand total of fifty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Murphy followed by Major, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Schneider, Murphy, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Pay those bills. Moving on to a zoning report, which I believe we have given to trustee Murphy this month since trustee Azrati is not able to join us tonight.
Okay, so in January of two thousand eighteen, the code enforcement department did the mentioned activities, building permits reviewed and issued, there were three, building inspections performed, there were three as well, complaints submitted and investigated, there was one, zoning violations issued, one, for failure to remove snow from sidewalks. There were three court hearings, municipal searches requested and completed, four, and there were zero fire inspections scheduled. And also note, there was working on the eighty Montgomery property evaluations, possible resolution.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. At this point, I would like to ask our county legislator, Christopher Munn, to take the floor and tell us what you want to tell us. Thanks for being here, sir.
Oh, thank you, good to be here, as always. My name's Chris Munn, I'm the county legislator for town of Red Hook and the village of Tivoli, and I try to come to one meeting a month, when schedule permits and doesn't conflict with county meetings, to meet with the board and see if there's anything that I can do for you, and also to give any updates to anybody on what's going on at the county. I also try to put this online, on Facebook, so that if anyone has, wants to meet with me in person, they can come directly to these meetings, and I can meet with them outside or after the meeting, as wish, as they wish. So, we had our February meeting, a lot of, like you say, paying the bills. One interesting thing, we actually adopted the rules of the legislature, which is a formality usually, but one of the rules we were contesting, which people may have followed online, was a rule in the legislature that allows legislators to vote when they're not even there. So basically, if you're not in the room, if you were there at the beginning of the meeting, but for some reason you're not in the room when they decide to have a vote, it allows the legislature to cast a vote on your behalf without you having any say in how it goes. It's just swept in with whoever's in the majority, and your vote is counted that way. A number of us felt like this seemed a little odd, not that I don't plan to be there, but if you can't be bothered to be in the room, you know, why should your vote be taken? And also, I would, you know, God forbid it's an emergency and I have to run out, I wouldn't want my vote on behalf of Tivoli or Red Hook to be cast without my consent. So we had a bit of an argument about it, but it remained in, unfortunately. I voted to remove it, as did a lot of my colleagues, but pretty much it was a party line vote, and it ended up staying in. In preparation for this meeting, I asked for an update from the Department of Public Works about the Tivoli Bridge, and they were very helpful in providing one. The lighting stations went up, the lampposts went up, I think it was today, so that part is done, and the stone veneer should be started next week. Unfortunately, they'll have to close the sidewalks for two weeks
Yes.
in order to put a heating enclosure around the border so that it can set properly. So there's gonna be combs, barricades, and signage to allow people to maneuver the bridge safely, so hopefully that'll be done, and that long, shared nightmare will finally be over, and hopefully it'll look great when it's done.
Yeah.
So I have every confidence in the county's ability to take care of that.
Yeah, the EPW of the county's been tremendously communicative through the whole process and tremendously accommodating of our concerns about aesthetics and historic look especially, and they've been great to work with, so.
That's great, yeah, Bob Wallke, he's Commissioner of Public Works, and thank you to him, I don't think he's watching, but thank you to him for all his good work there.
Yeah.
Finally, there's one item on the agenda that I'd love to have public input on for the month of March. A law was proposed, not by me, that will raise the smoking age, would raise the smoking age in Duchess County, the sale of cigarettes and e-cigarettes from eighteen to twenty-one years of age. I believe the proponents are doing this based on the health benefits of raising the age and perhaps not introducing young people to nicotine at such an early age. There are proponents, there are opponents, and I would love to have any public input, if anybody has any particular take on that, you can find my contact information on my website at munnforredhook.com. I have a Facebook page, you can message me on there, and my phone number is eight four five two nine three two zero eight eight. You can text me or call me, and all that information is available online, or you can email me. I'd be happy to take any public input on it, I'm looking at both sides, but I don't wanna prejudge anybody who wants to reach out to me, so please do get in touch. And that's really the only thing so far that I know is on the March agenda, we haven't seen the full agenda yet.
And we have the state of the county address next?
State of the county address is on the twenty-eighth. Well, anybody who can make it, you know, it's often, a lot of these meetings are during business hours, and legislature is a very part-time situation. I hope to be able to make it, but it's the twenty-eighth at Mayor's College, so.
Very good. Thank you, legislator.
No, thank you.
See you next month, if not before.
Okay.
I would like to invite public comment on the agenda items which we have before us. Everyone, I think grabbed an agenda. We're gonna talk about, Tivoli Fire Company offers officers of two thousand eighteen, we have a few budget modifications, we have a resolution to hire tie-in bond engineering to do some professional services related to the water system improvements, and we have the proposed local law that we just had a public hearing on as our last agenda item. Any comments from the public on these five items before we dive in?
But we are not doing the number two, the resolution.
Oh yes, excuse me, we struck number two off of there, yes. Thank you, trustee Murphy. Okay, number one, motion to accept the Tivoli Fire Company officers for two thousand eighteen. We have Chief Tom Chrissy Junior, First Assistant Chief Mark Hillenbrand, Second Assistant Chief is open, Captain Josh Coons, First Lieutenant Joseph Clum, Second Lieutenant Philip Chrissy, Directors Ed Lynch, Ralph Torsha Senior, Tina Hogan, Terry Martin, Tom Chrissy Senior, police office, uh, fire police officers. Captain Tom Chrissy Senior, First Lieutenant Ed Lynch, Second Lieutenant open. Rescue Officers Captain Cheryl Hillbrand, First Lieutenant Robert Stickell, Second Lieutenant William Sackle. Company Officers President Tom Chrissy Senior, Secretary Gail Torsha, corresponding secretary is open, Vice President Joseph Chrissy, Treasurer Terry Martin. Is there a motion to accept the Tivoli Fire Company officers for two thousand eighteen?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to just say, on behalf of the entire community, thank you to these individuals for volunteering in these critical positions, and, you know, we really appreciate everything they do and their willingness to serve within their own organization in these positions. And with that said, all in favor? Aye. Aye. And we accept the company officers. Number two on the table for next month. Next is budget modifications. Trustees, we went over this in the workshop, this is where we, you know, slide money from one budget line to another budget line, the total pot is the same, but, you know, we had a lot of water main breaks, so we had to put more money over here than we thought, those sorts of back and forth budgetary things, which we tried to do throughout the year, so it's not a big mess to clean up at the end. And so this month, we've got a few of these. We bought a new server for the computers, that's a big, big expense in the A Fund, and we're still seeing some effects of some water main breaks in the Water Fund, so we've discussed this. Is there a motion to adopt these budget modifications?
So moved.
That was Schneider followed by Murphy, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Next, we have the resolution authorizing the amendment to the tie-in bond agreement for professional services to include additional services in support of water system improvements. And I really wish that all those people will still, we're still here to hear this. This should fascinate everyone in Tivoli, because what this is about is calculating exactly how big our water tank needs to be to have proper water storage, but something I've learned as a layperson, not too much storage, you don't wanna keep your water sitting around for too long, there's sort of a staleness issue, so you don't wanna oversize, and also fire protection, fire flow. So we need to do that so that we can show the village several types of water tank that we may propose, and two possible locations in the village where the next tank could go, because if you haven't heard already, the old water tower from nineteen thirty-eight that we know and love will cost more to re-coat and repaint than getting a new one. That is just a pocketbook decision that, it's just black and white for us. And the volume of that tank is definitely questionable and probably undersized, so there's sort of two reasons. It's got also some structural concerns with, it's not gonna fall over tomorrow, but if we leave this thing up forever, it has some other issues besides the cost of recoding and the volume. So this is to authorize this engineering firm to do some of these calculations, which are gonna allow us to end up with some nice big placards like our zoning map, that will have several different styles of water tank. Those will include the multi-leg witch's hat that we're familiar with.
The lighthouse?
Something called the lighthouse, which is essentially a concrete cylinder that goes up just as high, and then you have your tank on top of that. And then the third style is what we call the soup can, and that's a ground-mounted tank, it's about as big as a big house, and that is powered with electric pumps, so while you don't have the visual impact perhaps, because it would be, you know, it's like another house, maybe you put some trees in front of it, you have electricity costs, those pumps wear out over time.
Potentially mechanical failure.
So we're gonna have three possible styles, and then we're gonna end up with three price tags, and the price tag is gonna be over sixty years, because maybe the witch's hat doesn't cost that much when you put it in, but you do have to paint that every twenty years for a million bucks. So these lifecycle costs will be present, we're gonna organize some public forums, we'll put them up on the third floor, and we'll have meetings just like this, we'll get everyone in there, we'll start talking about this as a community, what style of tank, where are we gonna put it? And we need to do all this for the seeker process, the environmental quality review, which is necessary before we can go after this money that we have identified, this four-point-seven million dollar zero-interest loan. So it's, to get there, we know we need that money, we have to do this water tower work first, and a very long-winded way to introduce the next agenda item. I could use a drink of water right now.
You can get him right.
Is there a motion to authorize this amendment for tie-in bond engineering, PC, agreement for professional services to include additional services in support of water system improvements?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, I believe we have a roll call somewhere in here.
It's right here.
All right. Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the resolution passes, and we look forward to working with tie-in bond again, they did a very good job on that initial report that they prepared for us, starting back in twenty fifteen, so. All right, and next we have a few things related to the hens. So first, and again, all those people left the room, but not all of them, we have, appreciate you being here. We conducted a full environmental assessment forum to identify potential project impacts, this is to evaluate if there are any significant adverse environmental impacts, we have to do that when we do a local law. And, where is my last sheet? That nice number three description is what I wanted to read.
Ah, got it.
Thank you. I deputized and bleed, my mouth is dry. I'll come back in after you're done.
Okay.
Sure.
I got this, I got this. The proposed action will apply to lands that are located within the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. It will also apply to lands that have been identified as sensitive for prehistoric activity by the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. The proposed action involves amendments to the village zoning law to permit the keeping of hens for personal use as an accessory use on a residential lot in the R one A, R two A, R three A, and L C districts, and in the portion of the R fifteen thousand district that is covered by the Historic Overlay District. The keeping of hens supports a local sustainable food system by providing an affordable nutritious food source for fresh eggs. The keeping of hens also provides free nitrogen-rich fertilizer, chemical-free pest control, animal companionship, and weed control, among other benefits. The purpose of the zoning amendments is to enable residents to keep a small number of hens for non-commercial use while creating standards that ensure that such domesticated hens are kept. Now, oh, nope, such domesticated hens do not adversely affect the neighborhoods surrounding the property where such hens are kept. The proposed amendments would permit the construction of accessory hen shelters and fenced grounds that would be required to be located behind the front building line of the residence and be fully screened from view from any neighboring front yard, and would therefore not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts to historic resources. No development is proposed as part of the action, and therefore no significant adverse environmental impacts will occur to archaeological resources. Based on the foregoing, the village board concludes that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact on historic and archaeological resources.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We also have sent our legislation to Duchess County, and told us it was a matter of local concern, and we send it, like all our laws, to our own planning board, who also serves as our local waterfront revitalization program consistency determinators. And they've given us their determination that it is in fact consistent with the policies of our LWRP. We're gonna accept this by a motion, is there a motion to accept the findings of the planning board regarding the LWRP consistency?
So moved.
That was Murphy followed by Schneider, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's the LWRP, which I have now signed and dated here. So now we move on to seeker, related to the hen law. This is a resolution adopting a seeker determination of nonsignificance, meaning it's not gonna have tremendous detrimental environmental impacts if we adopt this law. Regarding local law proposed A of two thousand seventeen, as revised to permit the keeping of hens. And we do not believe that there will, we believe there's a determination of nonsignificance here. Is there a motion to put this resolution forward? Is there a second?
Second.
That's Major followed by Schneider. Any discussion? A roll call vote, Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that's our seeker determination. And lastly, we come to the law itself. This is authorizing the adoption of the village board of trustees of the village of Tivoli Local Law A proposed of two thousand seventeen, which when, and if it's passed, will be called Local Law Two of two thousand eighteen, yes, to permit the keeping of hens. We've talked quite a bit about this already tonight, there are several whereas's, but I think everyone understands what's being proposed. Um, we've, we've talked, uh, quite a bit about this already tonight. There were several whereas's, but I think everyone understands what's being proposed. Is there a motion to put this resolution forward?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, I will just thank everyone who participated, all the residents who came forward in both public hearings and the chicken forum, as we called it earlier, and all our members of the zoning review committee. We know this is a controversial topic. It's a very hard thing. It's emotional. It's lots of things. Uh, we all care very much about this village and everyone should get, you know, an equal voice and, uh, just having that level of participation from the public has tremendous value for us as the legislator, legislature. So thank you to all of you and, uh, we will now have a roll call vote. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And the resolution is adopted. The law is passed. Uh, the next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, March twenty-first at seven PM here at the Historic Lots de Peister Hall. The regular board workshop will be the week preceding on March fourteenth, two thousand eighteen at seven PM. Moving on to committee reports. I have the water and sewer report since Susan is away. I'll try and skip straight to the, uh, rainfall if I know what to read. You can't look cause then you can't guess.
Two points out.
You got it? Well, that's your, no, that's your guess?
Oh, yeah, that's my guess.
All right, well, if I can find it, we can have our contest. But in the meantime, I'm gonna tell folks, we had a water main break at fifty-one twenty-three nine G. This one was a particularly awful one, uh, it occurring at night in the dark. I wanna thank Tivoli Fire Company for answering my request to, uh, get some safety precautions up there so that our DPW could repair this in a safe conditions, you know, right on the white line of the highway. Thank you for, for that. We also had a water, uh, main leak on Pharoah Avenue, uh, ten feet from Broadway. That was on January eighth. And a water main break at six Pharoah Avenue. So we had one on January third, one on January eighth, and one on January twelfth. So, um, I don't know. If I let you look for the water, I don't know if I, maybe we'll get the play. To be continued, shall we?
To be continued. Fine. We'll wait for Susan to get back from the Midwest.
All right, I don't see where he's got the, uh, rainfall written. Uh, justice court, please. Uh, trustee Schneider.
Absolutely. So the, um, Tivoli Village Court Charge Volume Summary Report for, uh, January first through January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. A total of three charges were received. A total of thirty-two charges were disposed. Three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars was collected and remitted to the state comptroller. I think it's really fabulous to note, I, I don't know if you guys are paying attention to these numbers as I read them off every month, but there's definitely, um, you know, an uptick. And just in reviewing the report here, a lot of parking. And granted, the charges disposed aren't necessarily originated in January. That's what that means. So these, uh, you know, go as far back as July of, uh, two thousand seventeen. But I think that that's a really, you know, overnight parking has been a, a pretty big concern. And I see a lot of those, um, tickets being addressed, uh, in this report, so.
Thank you, trustee Schneider.
Sure.
Actually one from December two thousand fifteen.
Wow. Yeah?
Takes a while sometimes.
Yes, it does.
Justice crime slow. Trustee Murphy?
Um, I wanna, I'm happy to announce, um, that Jackie Goss is taking over as, uh, our community garden coordinator.
Fabulous. Thank you, Jackie.
Yes, thank you very much, Jackie. Uh, with the summer wreck, my plate was very full. And I definitely was not able to give enough time to the garden, so Jackie's gonna take it over so I can concentrate on the summer wreck. And I think she'll do fantastic. And yes, we've got some people who are gonna be volunteering to help actually bring some more to the garden, so.
Great.
I know the Green Committee, uh, met yesterday and, uh, I just asked that Jackie come and meet with myself and, uh, the clerk so that we can go over how the checks come in and how we keep track of losing which plot and whatnot, so. As our new director will, uh, make sure she knows how that works. What was that?
You need compost?
Yeah, compost is good for the garden.
Absolutely.
Deputy Mayor Major?
The usual great things that go on at the library, uh, every week, uh, are still going on and you can see this at the, uh, Tivoli Free Library website. But there are a couple of special events, uh, one of which I think is particularly, uh, appropriate today. Like today, today. Uh, on March sixth, there is going to be a showing at five thirty of a movie called, uh, Fighting to Save Winter. And it is, uh, it's, it's a documentary about, uh, the effect of, uh, climate change on, uh, ski towns in particular. But this is a joint venture. Uh, it's, it's sponsored by the Tivoli Library, the Tivoli Green Committee, and the Mid Hudson Climate Lobby. So that, um, should be pretty alarming.
I have to say that a seventy-two day, a seventy-two degree day in February is absolutely appropriate time to announce it.
It is, it is, yeah. Uh, Paige Turner Book Club this month, uh, is reading a book called The Fortunes by Peter Ho Davies and they will be meeting on March fifteenth. And on, uh, March sixteenth, there's a, uh, Irish cookie decorating event, uh, from four thirty to five thirty. Mikey at Tivoli Bread and Baking is gonna be, um, providing sugar cookies and, uh, that'll be delicious.
Keep up. I get the pancake breakfast date.
Right. This, oh, I'm sorry. Saturday, March third, six to eight PM at the Elmendorf Historic Red Hook will be putting on their annual chili night. Which is, uh, always delicious. Lots of people make, uh, crock pots full of all kinds of chili and you go and you pay ten dollars and you you get a couple of kinds of chili and, and, um, you know, our soup night, um, at the Elmendorf a few weeks ago was really well attended. So I, I recommend chili night, March third. Monk Irving Place grounds are open to the public dawn to dusk, free of charge. If you have not been there to walk around, it's good any time of the year. Clermont has an event coming up that looks really interesting. It's, uh, Sunday, March eleventh, one PM. It's called Slavery of the Palatines. It's a lecture by Travis Bowman. And it, uh, looks at the surprisingly large role, uh, in colonial and revolutionary, uh, era of New York that slavery played. And up at Olana, um, there aren't any events going on right now, but they're doing these, um, digital audio tours where, um, you download, um, download these tours to listen to on your phone. And one of them is, um, uh, it's the Historic Landscape Tour. And so as you're walking around, you're hearing about, you know, what you're seeing. And, um, the second one is, um, Frigidaire Church's Letters and, uh, Nineteenth Century Balance Tour. So that should be pretty interesting if you're looking to take a stroll in a, in a lovely landscape. And as far as natural resources go, I can tell you from personal experience, the ticks are here. That's all I got.
Ticks are here.
Ticks are here.
Yeah.
Ticks are here and biting.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Major. Tivoli Fire Department Breakfast. And I was told specifically to call this more than a pancake breakfast, cause some folks don't like pancakes. I mean, just aren't pancake people. Not these pancakes. So the full menu, pancakes, French toast, eggs, bacon sausage, home fries, toast, coffee, tea, and juice. Sunday, March eleventh, eight AM to twelve PM. Eight dollars for adults, five dollars for kids five to twelve. And if I can get in there for looking under five, I'll be free. So it's free if you're under five. So, uh, come support the fire company for all they do for us and enjoy a nice breakfast on Sunday, March eleventh. Excuse me, Clerk Bruno, did we mention the village election date earlier? Think we should mention that, cause do we have another meeting before then? It's the next day, right? So village elections are Tuesday, March twentieth?
Correct. Twelve to nine at the fires.
At the firehouse. Um, we have two, uh, candidates running, or two, two open seats on the board. Uh, and as far as I know, we have two candidates who have submitted their petitions, uh, on time and, uh, they'll be listed. So do come out and support, uh, folks. And even if these are, as they often are, uncontested elections, it means a lot to those candidates if they get some turnout. These, these jobs are not easy and they don't compensate you perhaps fabulously. And that kind of support is really important. So don't think just because, oh, so-and-so is gonna get on again, that you should stay home. You should not. You should come out. We need that support. So village elections, March twentieth. And, uh, if you haven't been to the zoning office just behind this wall, we've had that room replastered, repainted. And we are gonna be giving it a good cleaning and organizing a lot of the materials that were there. So we've done now, uh, over the last few years, the clerk's office, the courtroom, the mayor's office, and the zoning office. And later this winter, uh, we'll be doing all the hallways in this building, fixing all the cracks and painting everything. So we're chipping away at the chips, uh, year after year and keep taking care of this tremendous, uh, patrimony that we have here. So, um, as the legislator, Chris Mon, told us, um, we are expecting more county bridge work, uh, next week, Monday. They're gonna have the, uh, they're gonna be working on the sidewalk side, the north side, and starting to put the masonry on there. Due to cold winter night temperatures, uh, they're gonna have a sort of tent over it and be keeping it warm. And unfortunately, that means that the sidewalk will be closed for two to three weeks. So, um, you know, if you're, if you're walking in that area or driving in that area, probably more so, be careful. We have to share the lane. Uh, you know, the county will be, their project, they'll be putting all sorts of cones and signage out there. But, uh, another brief period of inconvenience as we move closer to our very nice bridge. Yes, Jenny? You may.
Okay. Coming down the bridge and it did great job on the light post, but it looked awkward. Shouldn't it be three now? Since the bridge is longer? You know, it kinda looks, it looks awkward.
Well, I think maybe when they get all the stones on there, we'll hope it looks nice.
No, I mean, I know it's gonna look, I mean, we just, the way the light posts are put in. It should've been the one instead of where it gets one on this end, it maybe should've been down further east. Okay? And then so close. Cause they like, to me, they look like they're too close. And that's probably where the original ones were.
It is where the original ones were and, and the, you know, where they are is on both ends of the span. So even though up top, the bridge looks longer over here, down low, I, you know.
But it, but it looks when you're coming down, it looks, it looks like there should be a third one on one, one each side.
I, I think that's true if you're looking at the, at the walls themselves, but if you look at the bump out for the, uh, sidewalk. It, it's sort of in line, it makes sense in relation to that. So I think that once the stones are on, it'll, you know, once it's all, it'll make a big difference.
Oh, yeah, no. I know they have to do, put the shoulder, they have to, um,
But yeah, I think in regrouping the road too.
Put the entries in the, in the border when you make it.
Uh, I have two, two last things. Uh, I want to say again that our new garbage can law is gonna take effect on March first. Uh, we passed this last month. This is, uh, in response to years of the cans, especially from the private haulers being out on the curb seven days a week, blocking the sidewalk. You know, folks have to push the stroller into the street. That's not okay. Uh, we understand that everyone needs to put their cans out, but we've, you know, we're gonna enforce a window. Six PM the night before collection, um, you can put them out. And ten PM the day of collection, you gotta pull your cans back behind the front line of your house to a side or backyard or out of public view. You can't just pull them right off the sidewalk and leave them in the front yard. And, um, we've been disseminating this sort of like heads up, it's coming, you know, we don't want to have to find anyone. What we want is people to start pulling these cans in. And, um, I will be going door to door next week to some of the places where I think the cans are most habitually out and talking to these folks and letting them know. And, um, you could be given a, uh, a fifty-dollar ticket for this if you leave your can out, um, and violate this. Did you want to say something?
Yeah. My cans are right next to my, back by my garage, right in front. You know, my dad comes out and my porch comes out. We've got the, I've got the, then the garage in the back. I lie more when I'm up there.
That's great. Unfortunately, we've got, fortunately, we've got people leaving out all the time.
No, okay, I mean, I understand by the sidewalk. I understand that.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you're going by my house, if you look to the right and I have no car, you can see the garbage can lined up. Okay, okay.
Yep. So just trying to get everyone aware of this before we start to enforce it as best we can. Uh, you know, we're looking to have the cans pulled back. We're not looking to fill the village coffers with a fifty-dollar pop here and there. That's not gonna happen anyway. So, um, please be aware. If you have questions, let me know. I can explain it to you and I'll be going around town next week. And lastly, some fabulous news for the village of Tivoli. Uh, we did get a letter that we won our, uh, most recent community development block grant application, the CDBG in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars.
Cool.
Uh, to do Pine Street Phase Two. So this is the same grant program that two years ago allowed us to, uh, put in that bus lane over there and do the nice granite curving and drainage and the shelter, um, benches, all of that. So we, we won the next piece, which will be to, um, do drainage improvements and, and replace the existing sidewalk all along the south side of Pine Street, all the way over to North Road. It's really gonna be great. It's one of the worst stretches of sidewalk we have in the village. And when that's finished, our sort of downtown loop Pine Street Broadway is gonna have good sidewalk all around. So we're very pleased with that. And, uh, more on that, we'll have to, uh, you know, select a vendor and, uh, who the contractor's gonna be and whatnot. But, uh, Tivoli won ninety-five grand, so that's a good thing.
Good game.
Uh, with that, is there any other public comment on any topic?
Well, I think you're doing a good job.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks, Jenny.
Pete's got something to say?
I just wanna take this opportunity and I think, wow, let's know what's been going on to thank the DPW guys for their efforts, snow plowing while they were simultaneously repairing, uh, I don't know how many water main breaks.
Many, three, three.
And we have one of the guys out.
Yes, we have one, an injury, you know, it's been, it's been cold winters.
I wish winter was over, but I know it's not yet.
It was warm today, but let's not forget it's been a very cold winter and, uh, as always, that department does a lot with a little.
Good job to those guys.
So thank you for that. We will repay that. So, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Any final comments?
You know, I'm just gonna put it out there. Uh, I know we encourage people to come out and vote on March twentieth. Gonna be a really great day to remember Margaret Lemon as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Margaret Lemon, who we adjourned our meeting in memory of last month. A longtime election inspector, uh, who will be missed on March twentieth this year. Absolutely. So thank you for it.
Really nice though.
Yes. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned nine oh one PM. Thank you, folks. Thank you very much.